I could call the order, the Shockley School Board Regular Business Meeting for June 23, 2025. Amber, can you please do the roll?
Sidik.
Here.
Jaldes.
Peterson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Aldrich.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Shania. Rofe.
Here.
Please join me in my pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a libation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, welcome everybody to our last school board meeting of the fiscal year. And we get to start with our favorite portion of the meeting, Saver Pride. And leading off item 3.1 is our spring athletics presentation, and here presented is our athletics director, Matt Hanson. Welcome, Matt.
Thank you. And first, we're going to start with our last team to go to state, and that's our boys track and field, and boys and girls, but we have a couple of boys here, so Coach Taskin is going to kind of give a recap, and we've got a couple of students here as well. Colin Hokinson, Owen Stewie, that showed up tonight as well, and so just a little recap of the season here. The 2025 track and field season was a huge success. The girls were a young and developing team, but even with a lot of youth, they had a few standouts on the girls' side. The boys' side saw a lot of returns on a few new faces as well. This year, the boys had one of their best seasons in the past few decades. The boys team qualified for the true team state meet as the team of the second year in a row. Previously, the Shockley team has not qualified for the true team state meet since the early 2000s. The boys team finished 10th as a team at true team state. They also finished second as a team at conference and won the section meet, which they have not done since the mid-2000s. At the state meet, they finished the 11th place as a team. And during the season, our athletes were able to hold seven school records, including the boys 200, the boys four-by-one relay, the boys four-by-two relay, the boys 1600, the boys 3200, the boys long jump, and the girls triple jump. This year, we also had one of the most successful seasons, and given athletes qualified for the state meet. On the boys' side, we had 12 athletes qualify for state in 12 events. On the boys' side, that is the most athletes we have ever qualified for the state meet and the most events we had ever qualified for. If you combine the team, both boys and girls, we had a total of 14 athletes qualify for state in 16 total events. That is the highest combined total events we have ever sent to state, both boys and girls, and the second most athletes we have sent to state ever. The same unit of all our athletes, the athletes, the events they competed in and their places at the state meet are as models. Boys 100, Emmanuel Tay, who finished fourth place in all-state. In the boys 100, we had Sir Roy Miller finishing 10th place, and Joseph Tay finishing 15th place. In the one mile, we had Owen Stewie finish fourth place and all-state. And also, he was in the two mile and finished third place and was all-state and set a new school record at the state meet with a nine-minute, 12.28-second finish. In the boys 300 hurdles, we had Colin Hokinson who finished 10th and Alan Thomas who finished 12th. In the boys four-by-100 meter relay, we had Christian Perez, Emmanuel Tay, Joseph Tay, and Sir Roy Miller, who finished fifth place and were all-state and set a new school record of 41.77. In the boys four-by-200 meter relay, we had Emmanuel Tay, Jack Ho, Joseph Tay, and Sir Roy Miller. They finished in fourth place and were all-state and set a new school record of 126.26. And boys shot with Tyler Sparkle in 12th place, and Diskas, Tyler Sparkle, was high for 26th place. The boys high jump, Thomas Terhorst, high for 26th place. Boys high jump, Jeremiah Cora, high for 26th place. Colin Hokinson qualified in the pole vault with 17th place. And the girls 100 hurdles, we had Casey Peterson in 12th place. And then Sammy Carr, who did three events in all-state and all-three, she was sixth place in the high jump, seventh place in the long jump, and seventh place in the triple jump. So overall this year, athletes did an amazing job, both season and state meet. So, right here. And the two guys we have here are Colin and Owen, so congratulations, guys. Or there.
How are you doing, or adaptable?
Very good.
See ya. Thanks, Jeff. Again. Colin, nice job. Congratulations. 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 Shake your hand, Joe.
No, just a random slate. What's it like? Is it all right?
Yes, yeah.
All right. Moving on to our next sport to highlight is our adaptive softball team. So the Southern Stars had another great season. Again, this is our co-op with Chaska Chen and Prior Lake. They finished around 500 during the regular season, but they got hot at the end of the year, qualified for state. They finished with the consolation prize, so two and one at the state tournament. So it was a really fun year for our adaptive softball team. Our next group is our boys golf group. So we kind of talked about how good our conference and section is throughout all of our sports. But our boys golf team, they had the best first day qualifying score of 301, and they did not make day two. So to show how deep our team, or our section is. The state champion, Chan Hessen, came out of our section, and they were like 15 strokes better than that. So it was ridiculously good. But we did have more athletes qualify for day two. Adam Wagner, Max Brook, Rin Story, and Brandon Buscher. They did finish second place in the conference this year. Several top finishes throughout the season at invitationals and then throughout the conference season. So just a really, really talented group of boys golfers and just those. It's time to get a few people over at the section meet, like how far boys golf in Minnesota it has come to see. We shot the best we've shot in years and years and years, and we weren't really close to making that state two. So, boys golf. Our girls golf team, a little bit of a rebuilding year. Unfortunately, we didn't have anybody come out of the first day of sections. Coach Donae Corto had this to say. He said, "We worked really hard. Dedication paid off. We improved our team average from the first meet to the end of the year by 30 strokes," which is really good. They did have a couple student athletes that were all-conference, Emerson Young and Zoe Collins. So he says the future is bright with the girls working really hard. Next is our boys baseball team. So our boys baseball team traveled south for the first time this year. They did a spring trip in Nevada. Maybe that's the reason for the success they had all year, but at the end of the season, 18-5, they won the South suburban conference for the first time in 10 years. They were seeded number one in our section, which is 248. They ended up going 1-2. They beat Jefferson in the first game and then lost. I don't know if anybody was there, but it was an absolute heartbreaker to Minutant who ended up going to state and getting second in state. But they hit a two-out, two-out, two-strike homerun to tie it in the bottom of the seventh and then ended up losing in the top of the year, you know, in the eighth inning. So, but unfortunately, that gives a little bit of a hangover there, and they lost to Eden Prairie in the elimination round. But a very, very, very talented group of seniors led by Nick Johnson and Carson Schroder. But really, this was kind of a senior-heavy team, similar to many of our boys teams this year throughout the entire year. But just really, really, really great accomplishment winning the South suburban town conference. The one thing you'll notice in the next couple of groups that we talk about is on the academic side. So this team won the all-state gold standard. So that's only eight teams in the entire state get this. So our boys baseball team was one of eight to get the all-state gold standard, which is outstanding, not only on the field but off the field as well. Our next group is our softball group. This was a little bit of a rebuilding year. We had a new coach, Coach Lindsay Van Lanningham. Record wasn't the greatest. We finished eighth in the South suburban conference. This was a rebuilding year for sure for our team. At one point, we had two eighth graders, four ninth graders, and the 10th graders in the starting lineup. So just again, one of the years we're going to rebuild. But we were led by seniors Perez Wellander and juniors Brendan Holzeder and Matty Hanson. They look the balls back next year. But similar to the boys, the baseball team, the softball team itself off the field as well. They're in the running for one of the National Fast Pitch Coaches Association's academic awards. They had 11 of their 20 players had GPAs of 3.7 or higher. So pretty impressive on the softball scene as well. And then our girls lacrosse. This was a first-year coach, Coach Mitch Benson. We had our first winning season during the regular season. We were 7-6. It's our first winning season since 2019. So it was good to see a new coach, and our girls playing really well. Fortunately, we lost to Jefferson, really close, fun first-round matchup. We did lose to Jefferson. Our team was led by Charlotte Collin and Rachel Swavey. And they were just a really, really solid team this year. It was fun to watch them throughout the year. So that was our girls. Our boys team was just under 500, so they were six and seven this year. They were sixth place in the conference. They received the sixth seed, which is, again, we talked section and conference, by far the toughest section in the state. The state champion ended up coming out of Kadena. But we played Rosemont. We were tied with like six minutes to go in the game. So it just shows the sixth seed was as close to the three seed, which really gave the two seed a really good game in the next round. But they played well. The three seniors up top there, Max Scholes, Zach Doctorer, and Zach Lee, were our leaders. We had a couple of really young kids as well. So the future is bright for our boys lacrosse team with the seniors exiting. But like I said, a lot of young firepower coming behind them. A couple more. Our boys tennis team had another really good season. They were eight and six. They were third place in the conference. They ended up winning their first playoff game, or playoff match. They beat Prior Lake, which is always kind of a real fun thing as well. But ended up losing to the eventual state place winner, which was Eden Prairie. On the individual side, we did send three to day two. So Anuj, who's a guy right in the middle there, he ended up, just an epic, epic match. Lost 7-6, 7-6 in the semifinals, so we couldn't advantage the state, but we did finish in third place. I don't think on the far left side is Ape. He's a senior, but the other one's a junior. They finished in fourth place as the number one double. So a really good showing for our tennis team. Similar to baseball and softball, our tennis team, it's even hard to fathom, but they won the team gold award as well, and their GPA was 3.92 as well. So, and that takes everybody who qualifies for the section team. So just a really, really, really outstanding accomplishment, some really quality student athletes there. And then our final group, the inaugural season for boys volleyball. They finished 23-7. They were second-place finishers in the South suburban conference. Not sure if anybody went to the playoff game at Jefferson, but it might have been one of the best volleyball matches I have ever watched. It was a five setter. I think it was like 23, or 25, 23, 27, 25, 27, 25, 28, 26. And then it was like 15-10. So it was just back and forth for three hours. Absolutely outstanding volleyball. Unfortunately, we were just on the wrong side of it. But a great year. When I asked Coach Fleming if she could give me just a little bit of a highlight, she said, "Well, we set a lot of records this year." But she was, yeah, she was very excited about the season and what's yet to come. Another one of our really quality student athlete teams. They won the team silver academic award. So just really, really quality, outstanding student athletes in the spring. I kind of made one quick note. I was doing like by the numbers for the whole year. We had six conference champions. We had nine programs advanced to state. We had a runner-up finish in wrestling. We had two third-place finishes in girls swimming and football. A fourth-place finish in boys volleyball. Two fifth-place finishes with boys hockey and adaptive softball. A triple-A winner, which was Colin, who was here tonight. We had 40 athletes signed to play in college. We also had a state champion, Ari Zellman. So just like overall, just a ton of pride and a lot to be proud of for this. I kind of joked to myself, I was doing a count through, I attended 100 evening events this year. So it shows we were good. It led for a really busy year, but usual dreams stayed in there. And Hockey Day, and it just felt like it was one of probably the most successful seasons for the Savers. So it was fun to be a part of, and maybe we won't quite replicate it, but it'd be fun to try to do it again next year.
Any questions from the group at all?
I always love these updates. Thank you, Matt.
I hope so, too.
Yeah. Yeah, I just, I was going to echo that. I just have a comment. Matt, just want to thank you and the other folks who work in your office. You do just a great job staying on top of everything, keeping organized. People don't understand, especially in the spring with weather changes and all those extra things that are done for kids, the send-offs to state tournaments. Those are incredibly special moments, and you had a ton of those this year in your team. Your team in the athletics office just handled it brilliantly, so thank you.
Definitely thanks to Village. I know there's a lot of people who love the send-offs and all the fun things. So it was a fun year.
All right.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is item 3.2, National Safety Month Partnership Spotlight. And here presented is Jim Bosic, our Assistant Superintendent.
Yes, thank you, Chair Smith. Just in honor of National Safety Month, we wanted to take a minute to highlight a few of the things that take place in Shockley Public Schools. And, you know, when you take a peek at this list, I would just say, you know, safety is something that we think about door-to-door every single day. I tell people it's the most important thing that we do because everyone wants their child to go to school and have a safe and caring experience. It's everything from the physical health to the mental health, making sure that we're prepared for any number of things that we obviously hope don't happen, but making sure that we have a response if in fact they do. One of the most critical things that we have are amazing partnerships. You know, as usual, I want to highlight the Shockley Police Department and just the open lines of communication and their willingness to work with us on anything, but plan ahead and when needed, you know, make last-minute adjustments. I think, you know, going forward, and I never thought I would say this, but we've got some exciting things coming up with the fire department and the way that we handle some of those events that take place in schools and the way we run those drills. And we'll be around talking to you a little bit next year about some of the things that Cannon and I are working on right now to sort of streamline the way we handle those emergencies or more so the false emergencies that do come up from time to time. And you can also see, you know, we've got any other, any number of other partners up there, you know, from the county to our local healthcare facilities. I love you guys. We're always working with Palmer. We've got good things coming up there with TransFinder and other ways to make sure that parents are more connected with their kids than ever. You know, again, you can just see, you know, we're constantly trying to have kids be involved in this. We want to introduce them in positive ways to our local law enforcement, fire department, et cetera, et cetera, so that they have good relationships in the need, they ever need, ever need them in any circumstance. And want to highlight Heart Safe Schools. We were the first Heart Safe School District in the state. We testified on behalf of a bill that did in fact become a law. Where having a Heart Safe Plan will now be required. We will be the only district in compliance with that law in about a week when it comes into effect. We anticipate being highlighted again by CARE 11 for the work that has been done. And we are proud to announce a new AED partnership. For those of you who are at Schlepper Field, Jenny Haddis had another AED donated to us. It's a tower-style AED that will be placed at Schlepper Stadium at no cost to the district. Because as much as we had the AED donated, you'll see on the next slide, that we also had a group known as AFA, which, look that one up real quick. It is the Advanced First Aid Association, which has donated us heart gel for the first four years in the city of Shockley. Has partnered with us to have this device installed at Schlepper Field. So we have another outdoor facility that will be covered by AEDs much like Von Field and some of the other places that we have on campus. We are continuing our reunification work. Just last week, we had an event at the community center, making sure that we are, that we're ready for the possibility of needing to use that space. Should the high school ever need a reunification site. In the meantime, it served as an opportunity for us to tabletop, you know, again, what a reunification would like, look like at our high school. And we're constantly keeping that relationship with the city and county in a place where in the event we were to need to reunify, we are as ready to go as you possibly can be. Another piece that we are pleased to announce, and I just received an exciting email on this today, is the Safe Routes to the School, which is something that we partner with both the city and the county on. In 2025, in working with the Department of Transportation, we identified a number of needs in our school district. And on the next slide, you will see that we have been in conjunction with the city given the following two grants, one of which is for roughly $70,000 and will help us to construct better ways of getting into the high school for students crossing the street. And then also a significant amount of money to update the crossings near Sweeney Elementary and also Lyons Park. And I know I just, walking into this meeting, Ed Zabat and I were talking a little bit about who will be the primary contact going forward with the city of county, working with principals to get these pieces and places as quickly as we possibly can. And hopefully grant funds will continue to flow because we have other identified needs in the district as well. So these are just some of the things that we're doing. We're always excited to share what we're doing with the board and the ways of safety. I think every time we develop a system, we discover two more that we should have. You know, sitting here tonight, I feel so much better than I did even three years ago and the work of, you know, the work of Cannon, the work of our local law enforcement and other first responders and second. So want to thank everybody who's involved, and if there's any questions, I'm happy to take those.
That is a comment. I mean, the Safe Schools, the AED program is just amazing. Tim and I have done, we have to get like CPR training for coaching and maybe other Sierra app as well. And AEDs, they really are such a game changer. The CPR training is now is just do it until somebody comes up with an AED. I mean, it's just, it's just changed everything, and having them available is just amazing.
Well, I mean, my life was saved by an AED, and that is something that's never lost upon me in the fact that we have these in our schools. They're something that I'm very pleased and happy about.
Mr. Tim, so to expand on that, that's a perfect segue. Thank you for setting it up for me. In terms of who is certified in training as part of the Heart Safe, is it certain staff from our student perspective, Health and Human Services Academy? Would there ever be training offered at a student level? What's the scope?
So right now, Tracy Cordier oversees and makes sure that each school has a team. Building administrators are responsible for identifying a number of people within the school with the thought in mind that we want to make sure that there's always somebody there who has had the training. So we try to look across job descriptions. We try to look across fields so that we've got as many hours as possible covered within a building. I know at both the middle level and the secondary level, we offer courses. At the middle level, it's called Code Red. Code Red allows students to leave with a certain level of first responder certification, and they do in fact cover, you know, both AEDs, CPR, all of those pieces. So do we have students formerly that are part of the team? No, but do we have teams, you know, do we have kids when I was in East Middle School who I would have been comfortable operating, you know, one of the devices on me? Absolutely.
Doc, if you remember doing first aid or CPR, seventh grade, right? That's certainly way before the AED was even there. But that was, to your point, it's a game changer to have that technology and just to be comfortable using it. You hope you don't have to, but we're glad it was available for you. So thank you for all of that effort, and everything the team does.
And a huge thank to Jenny Haddis because again, she's fundraised every penny of this. It's been at no cost to the district. And again, it's just been great teamwork, and you know, Tracy and her staff have done a wonderful job, too.
Are we fully, as a district staff isn't the right word, but have AEDs wherever we need them? Or are we still short and need them installed in our school?
From a legal perspective, we have them everywhere we need them. And in fact, we probably have them in places such as Von Field and Schlepper Field where we're not even required to at this point. But yes, each of our sites has them. And again, depending on the size of the site, if that would give you the number of AEDs. You know, I know like I used to say, we had at least two, it might be three. I'm not sure how many we have in the high school, but yeah, we're, we are in compliance.
I could add a little bit to that. When I, early in my tenure here, I remember meeting with Ed Zabat and with Jenny and laying out what is, project what it means to be, you know, AEDs in appropriate locations across the district. So do that in partnership. And again, I think that goes above and beyond any standards for doing that, but certainly had Jenny's input into that as well. And yeah, and she's just remarkable. She made that her goal, and then it was the, what about the ongoing recurring expenses? And she's done that, too, and just a tremendous partner. And it's really neat, you know, she didn't do it seeking any recognition, but it's been really gratifying to see her get, you know, some local recognition and then even broader. And then you see her effort is now being emulated, which Jim was referring to, even in state laws and expectations for schools across the state. And I think that just speaks volumes.
I know the state high school, they have a foundation that they give grants to schools for AEDs. And I know they've also received money from the National Federation Foundation for AED money as well. So I know schools are taking advantage of it, putting some pre- dollars off there to make sure that your schools are giving what they need to keep them safe.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is item four, the consideration of the agenda as presented. So who second? A motion by Rofe, a second by Aldrich. Any discussion? See none. All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is item five, public comment. This is the time when members of the public can participate in the meeting without being part of the meeting agenda. A member of the public may address the board on an agenda topic or on another topic pertaining to school board business. We allocate a total of 15 minutes for public comment at this meeting. Each individual speaker may speak for up to 2.5 minutes. The sign-up for public comment has been conducted online and in person prior to the CBE's meeting. No one has signed up for public comment prior to the CBE's meeting. We will move on to the next item on the agenda. Next on our agenda is item six, the consent items. And you can see Amber has it on the screen. We have several personnel items, minutes, bills, wires, and the school board advertising agreement.
I make motion to approve, Mr. President?
Second. We have a motion by Peterson, a second by Aldrich. Any discussion?
Got one comment, Court, from Chair Smith. Being here to the school board, I'm not sure if this is normal, and this isn't necessarily something that needs to be answered today. We could do it offline, too. But I'm just curious what the numbers of resignation numbers in 2020, is that like a normal amount of attrition that we see? And there's a few departments in here that seem heavier than others. So I just want to acknowledge that it's in here, and I know that a school of our size is going to naturally have some of this every year. But I was just curious if this is, you know, something that we need to have our radar on, or if this is something that is normal. Wanted to point out, we can address that at a different time.
It isn't, it isn't an unusual amount. Some, some of what you will see on this is people who were probationary and that ringing back. And you'll also see people who will be resigning. And some of that is a choice rather than so that. So in terms of voluntary leaving, not an inordinate amount.
And for those watching at home knows that Keith Craig, our Director of Human Resources, is on here. So thanks, he.
And Mr. Tim, just a quick comment. I've had the great pleasure, short and sweet, working with Mary Jane over at Pearson Learning Center as a subcommittee assignment. Got to leave, you know, three times, and then she decided to retire. I promise I didn't have any influence over that, but just wanted to wish her well in retirement. And it was an honor to serve.
Further discussion? See none. All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is item seven, some resolution for donations approval. At least we have one, one organization, Heart, with a donation on there. At least we have one, one organization, Heart, with a donation on there. If this is a resolution, I would entertain a motion to approve. So who? Second. A motion by Brophy, a second by Aldrich. Any discussion? Seeing none. Amber, can you please do the roll?
Zidic.
Yes.
Valdez.
Yeah.
Peterson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Aldrich.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Brophy.
Yes. Resolution passes. All right. Next up is the action portion of our meeting. We have like eight items in this section. Item 8.1 is our Community Education Census Resolution. And here to present is Lisa Ron, our Director of Community Education. Welcome, Lisa.
Good evening. Thank you, Chair Smith. Appreciate being here. You may recall last year I was here at the June meeting with the same resolution to update the district population. This year, according to the state demographer, our population has increased from 51,639 to 52,629. And by passing the resolution, it does create more funding. There's new data that's been collected and shared by the Minnesota State Demographer. And the demographer updates populations to help MDP disperse funds. And our funding is based on district population. So that resolution is, is there for you to pass if you so choose. And if you have any questions, then go ahead.
Just a, just a quick, oh, go ahead. And maybe it's in here. I didn't look at the resolution in detail. What would the state demographer give, calls it, snaps the chalk line? When are they measuring that growth? Is there a, is it like a specific, you know, is it January 1st to whatever? Or how are they computing that population?
It's for, it's a year computing. I'm not sure if it's a calendar year of January 1 to January 1. They release those June, around June 1st. So I can find that out for you.
And then just to follow up, we don't have to answer today, but like what methodology are they using to even come up with population? Is it based on, you know, who's homesteading a house? And I, you know, I just, I'm curious how they come up with the, you know, the math, if you will, but growth is good. So we'll.
We'll find out for you.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Further discussion? Entertained a motion? Second. Motion by Peterson, a second by Brophy. Any further discussion? Seeing none. This is a resolution. Amber, can you please do a roll?
Zidic.
Yes.
Valdez.
Yeah.
Peterson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Aldrich.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Brophy.
Yes. Resolution passes. Thank you, Peterson. And next on our agenda is item 8.2, Head Start Program Contract. And Lisa will present again.
Thank you, Chair Smith. This also comes up once a year. Head Start uses a room over at Pearson to, for their program. And there are very little changes to that lease. It's just an increase of $50 a month over what it was last year. So any questions on that one?
There are no questions, I'll make a motion to approve. Second. Motion by Aldrich and a second by Johnson. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. And you're here for one more, right?
Yes.
Item 8.3. I'm glad this was arranged this way. This is item 8.3, YMCA School Aged Care Contract. And Lisa will present again.
Yes. So this is an agreement for the YMCA to provide a school aged care at our elementary schools. They do so for grades eight through five. And the following are the changes that are in there. They made updates to these to families, which is pretty typical each year. And updated, and then I updated the fees that were owed to Shakopee Public Schools, as well as we added number 24, which was actually, you know, if either party decides to terminate the agreement, it's pretty difficult to have any of these sorts of agreements and realize we had that in there. So we added that. Any questions about this one?
These are year-to-year contracts?
Year-to-year. Yep.
And is there a summary of what, why the change out? And as you said, it's tough, it's reasonable that everything over time.
Yes.
Increases.
Yeah.
Is there a?
It's about a 4% increase in, in their rent for our facilities. And that's what we've done each year.
And then in terms of the fees being charged to families, is that roughly the same percentage or is it?
I think it's slightly less than 4%.
Entertained a motion? So. Motion by Aldrich and a second by Peterson. Any further discussion?
I just have a real quick comment. My, my daughters attended this all those years ago and it was great during the summer. It was a bountiful experience for both of them. I'm just, you know, I'm glad that all those years later, just say that about my own kid, but that this is still going strong.
Glad to hear that. Thank you.
No. Lisa.
I'm in it tomorrow morning.
Do lots of field trips in the summer.
Worth its weight in gold.
Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, everyone.
Next on our agenda is item 8.4, LTFM 10-Year Plan. And here to present is Phil Nassey, our Director of Finance and Operations. Ben Berry, World Architects and Engineers and Evina Buildings and Grounds Manager.
Good evening. On your screen, you will see a presentation prepared by Ben and World Architects, and I will shortly hand it over to Ben. But before I do, I'd just like to queue up this agenda item. Our LTFM, standing for Long-Term Facilities Maintenance, 10-Year Plan is an annual process as required by the Department of Education. Ben is here to give an overview of our LTFM plan, which is a summary for funding for projects like deferred maintenance, health and safety related projects, disabled accessibility type projects. What you will see is our planning for both fiscal 2026 and next year, and then a 10-year outlook. I should mention that LTFM is a restricted funding source and the projects that Ben's going to go over can be used specifically for deferred maintenance, health and safety, and disabled accessibility. You would not be able to use LTFM revenue for teaching and instruction or things of that nature. So it's a restricted set aside specifically for that purpose. I'm sure I'm paraphrasing much of this and so Ben is here to, to provide some clarity. And I should mention before handing it over to him, there are a number of attachments in your school board agenda. Ben is going to go over the presentation. Our intent here would be to not go over the great detail of the 10-year expenditure or revenue plan, but know that it does tie in and reconcile with the document that Ben's going to share with you tonight. So with that, we'll hand it over to Ben.
All right. Thanks for having me. Again, Phil mentioned this is an annual process. So the district can go through this every year. So they do make you do the 10-year plan, but obviously every year you have a chance to reset and revise it as you go. Why do we do this? Pretty simple, to get the money and have to approve the plan. So that's the reason why we do this and bring it to the board so you can receive the funding. There are a series of things that go with it that are all the attachments are on the board packet and which, the resolution, the 10-year plan itself, the expenditure plan, and a statement of assurances, all that is a little bit. LTFM has been around since 2015. As Phil mentioned, it's allowed expenditures, deferred capital maintenance, increasing accessibility, and then health and safety projects. It's not allowable expenditures for new facilities or heavy remodeling. So you can, essentially it's intended so that you can replace the assets you currently have. It was just example, if you have carbon in this room, it's deteriorated, you can replace it with carbon. So for this coming year, your revenue is projected, the first two lines is all about how much money will you have? So your revenue is projected over 900,000, projecting a fund balance of 1.4 million. And then after that now comes the expenditures. So we, there is some set staff salary coded to LTFM. It's all expense, we track that. There's annual inspections that you have to do every year on fire doors, et cetera. So we track a budget for that. The next two line items, interior services, mechanical systems, those are allowances that we create just to give some wiggle room over the course of the year. We know things will come up. Something breaks that we weren't intending, that we didn't project, that needs to fix it and keep things moving. So those are some budgets to do that. And then there are also some identified projects that we try to do every year to try to maintain your assets. So door access layers at Pearson, those are, those are the automatic buttons that you push on a door, the door opens automatically. Again, that would fall under the accessibility criteria. Track maintenance, that is maintaining the track surfacing at Von Field. And then at West Middle School, the elevator is an aged, aged piece of equipment that has had several service calls. It's time to replace the equipment there. And then the con room at West Middle School is also identified. I mean, those of you who heard it last year, you might recall that we are currently working on the East Middle School room. So this is about greatest equity amongst your middle schools. Again, that, we project then that your remaining fund balance would be 960,000 or so, which as a general rule of thumb, what we try to do is keep your fund balance on equal to your projected revenue. So we're falling right in that. And then I often get asked, how do we come up with these projects? And are we tracking this and do we have all this covered? And are we trying to project things? And the answer is yes. There is a database that we maintain for the district of projects that, and anything that's out of luck kind of gets thrown on that database. So it's come a couple of different ways. So one, certainly that the team of administration all have expertise in the building and kind of know where their problem spots are. So those are things that we track. Architects, engineers from old, we walk the buildings and put things on the list that we're projecting are going to need attention in the coming years. And third, we meet with building principals and try to track their kind of pain points and pinch points to make sure that all those things track. Through that, we create a kind of the top, top needs list as we kind of think about the next 10 years and what we're anticipating coming your way. But that should minimize, there's been a lot of great investments so that the blue arrows show that you've been kind of spreading the funding out across your facilities and be able to accomplish some really great projects in the recent, the recent history. So just wanted to get a little one thing on where we stand facility wise.
I'd just like to add to Kada District, because those are lease spaces, we can't use LTFM for those.
Yeah, it's good. That said, I've been working with the landlord and I think about those getting a few, a few of the improvements that taught me that was identified, some of the static areas from just their finishes that have been aged over time. So I've been working with the landlord. Still trying to find ways to accomplish things on this list.
So just to wrap this up and thanks for your presentation, where we would go from here, should this be approved, in order to be eligible for funding, we would turn this around and send the 10-year expenditure plan, the 10-year revenue plan, Dr. Edmund assigned the statement of assurances, and then the resolution to go along with that up to the Department of Education by their, their deadline in order to be eligible for the LTFM program and funding related to it.
So a little hypothetically, we submit all this and it's approved, stated, and something comes up just in the 10-year plan. Are we, you know, is this written in stone or is there flexibility to make amendments? Because again, 10-year projection, who knows what may come up in a while.
Absolutely. Thank you for asking that. You should have mentioned that at the beginning. No, this, this is flexible. The Department of that recognizes that this is, is our best plan at this time, but things will change. And so we try to keep our one, two, maybe even three years as close as we can, knowing that there's going to be changes there too. When you get out into the year 79, 10, it's, it's based off of building age more than anything else and predicting that, okay, this building by year seven is going to be 25 years old. And so typically that's when roofs and windows and boilers and things of that nature start to come due. So it is, it is flexible based off of.
Just add on to that, that it's not just flexible based on need, but you know, none of, none of these future projects are designed or have been publicly bid out yet. So there are also things that could happen through the course of that process that we discover, hey, you know what? This bathroom that we thought was the best plan, that one really isn't. We should really do it in this one. Or maybe we get a construction market thing that happens that drives bids higher than we think is fair for the, so those things, there's flexibility built into all of that so we can react to what happens.
Well, and certainly one to go on record, if it's an annual process, obviously we have the experts in the room here that are looking at it and we're making adjustments as we go here. But just wanted to make sure that that was, that point was clarified. And then as a follow-up, because I was just going to ask a similar question, for those non-LTFM eligible, eligible expenses, negotiating with the landlord, but if there's, some of the district has to come up with funding, and maybe this is a little question as well, what other funds are available? Does it come under general fund? How would we go about some of those projects?
I will say that the projects that we're doing at Kada this summer are being, right now, fully funded by the landlord as part of our lease agreement. If we exceeded that amount, then the other plus than the lease.
Yeah, there, there really would not be a funding mechanism for that. So it would be general fund. There's always, operating capital would be an allowable use for, for projects of that sort. But as we'll talk about when we talk through the budget, we have some curriculum adoption expenditures that are coming from that brand of property capital allocation. And or funding opportunities outside of our ongoing allocation, right? So the technical parking lots, so that will be an abatement bond opportunity down the road. But again, those are tax impact related things. So to answer your question directly, outside of LTFM and projects that would not be eligible for LTFM, more often than not, you're talking about general fund.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. I see on the chart here, there's a lot of ventilation needs. Can you explain what that might be?
Yeah, sure. So those two buildings in particular, I think there's two that I've not seen. Long story short, you actually should be, your district's in very good shape ventilation wise in terms of age of systems and indoor air quality that's being provided. Most of your systems range in like the 20-year-old range, which, or newer, which is a really great spot to be, most school districts, they're often facing 50-year-plus systems. So you're in a really great spot. There are a couple of older systems that Pearson and West and maybe, maybe just, it might be one of these two. An older system, about half the buildings that upgraded, and all of those cases, there's still a need to kind of go back and get the rest of those facilities. So you got a couple of older systems left.
By upgrading the ventilation, that, that it saves us on the maintenance costs and it's also the newer systems are more efficient. So we're saving money, you know, with the running and operating of those things.
So maybe where you're going is why, isn't that like? So maybe where you're going is why, isn't that what I think done yet? And long story short, it's, it's funding versus the, just the cost of the projects are exceeding your allocation every year. So it continues the need to be deferred and so there are other funding sources possibly available. Or you save up real.
Because I could imagine like an air conditioning unit on top of the building is very, very expensive to replace. And what is, I don't know what the life of something like that is, but if we have nine hundred thousand plus fund balance, I'm sure that replacing something like that at one building would be done a lot of that. Or maybe that wouldn't even be enough. I have no idea. I have no idea what a commercial air conditioner on a school building would cost, but I would imagine that it's a lot.
Yes.
Knowing how much it is to do it at a house, I imagine how much one of those would cost.
Well, that brings a good question, Bella. Generally, we keep that fine, as you mentioned, that we keep it at cost in, cost out. And then, so if we have a large ticket item like a roof or something like that coming, what is kind of the general guidance, how far down we would spend that account? Sort of fifty thousand, five hundred thousand? I mean, obviously there's emergencies, right? You gotta say keep, keep money for it.
Yeah. I think we, we have tried to keep it at about a year's revenue, as I mentioned. So we're, we're about at the floor of that. There's nothing in statute related to LTFM that says you couldn't go lower than that. You can't deficit spend or have a deficit fund balance. But you, you could go lower than that temporarily. I think some of the larger ticket items that, that have been discussed, maybe out into the early 2030s, would be beyond the scope of our annual revenue for LTFM. And we may have to, as we discuss in the finance, to take a look at and how we're going to approach those larger projects. Because it would, it would probably be outside the pay-as-you-go scope here.
I think that's where schools get in trouble. I mean, they kick the can down the road with the needs for their facilities and they get to the point where they, they just, they can't afford to replace them because the costs are so expensive and they didn't maintain it upfront. So to get more life out of it, especially small school districts that don't have the LTFM money. Oh, like you said, Ben, we're in a good spot because we have a lot of newer facilities. So, but we can't ignore upgrades that are needed as well. So that could buy this a bit of fun.
It's really not, I always try to draw the parallel to probably what you do with your own house. You know, unless you, unless you build a brand new house, if you're in a house that's been around for some time, it, it really is kind of parallel, right? You, you'll save and go do a project and you'll save and go do a project. Something will break on you and you have to do something that you maybe didn't, weren't planning on spending the money on, but you've got some savings to do it. And then every once in a while, you have to go to the bank and you have to get a loan to go do a bigger project on your home, right? And it really kind of is a similar concept with school districts. Because just like at home, you know, you sort of win in the lottery, right? You don't have all the funding available to do every little thing you possibly could do at home. So there's, there's just a lot, there's, you know, a lot more spurty.
And that's why we like to keep that balance in there, Nick, is so if an emergency comes up, we have money now to hopefully cover that emergency and not have to say, oh, we have to wait till next year. We have that, there, that balance there for emergency situations.
Further discussion? Entertaining motion. So move.
Second.
A motion by Brophy and a second by Aldrich. Any further discussion? This is a resolution. Amber, can you please do the roll?
Sidetick.
Yes.
Valdez.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Aldrich.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Brophy.
Yeah.
Resolution passes. Thank you. Bill will remain and present our next attached item. This is the LTFM resolution for Southwest Metro.
Yes, thank you. Really, the next two agenda items, and we'll take them separate, but they are obviously related, are also our annual process, an annual process related to Southwest Metro Intermediate 288. We're a proud metro, a member of Southwest Metro. And, and as you know, Southwest Metro does not have a tax base as an intermediate district. And so their member districts are authorized to levy on behalf of the Southwest Metro Intermediate District based off of utilization. And really, the key attachments here in, in an agenda item eight point five is the third one that says page twenty-six for fiscal twenty-seven, usage calculation levy allocation form one. That will give an overview of the levy obligations based off of utilization. And you can see that in that attachment, Chocopee is, our usage is 26.65% of the total. So our percentage of the LTFM levy, the lease levy, and the safe schools levy is based off of that utilization. Now, you may wonder how that utilization has changed from the prior year. Last year it was 25.77%. So the increase is just under 1% from last year. This year, based off of that utilization, the total for those three categories, again, LTFM, lease levy, and safe schools levy is $230,679.45. Last year was just about $216,000. So an increase of approximately $15,000 from the prior year based off of those three areas. Again, similar to the previous agenda item, if approved, I would take this information and get the resolution back over to Intermediate 288 and, and then make this part of our levy information system data entry process later this summer and then part of our levy process for taxes available in 2026, district revenue for fiscal 27 next December as part of our through the taxation hearing. That's, that's really all I have for this one, related to the LTFM project for Southwest Metro.
I'll make a motion to approve this presented.
Second.
A motion by Peterson, a second by Brophy. Any discussion? Seeing none, this is a resolution. Amber, can you please do the roll?
Sidetick.
Yes.
Valdez. Peterson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Aldrich.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Brophy.
Yeah.
Resolution passes. And then cycling right into eight point six, the Safe Schools Levy Resolution for Southwest Metro. Bill will present again.
Yeah, so similar to, to Chocopee School District, we are on a school resource officer program as Assistant Superintendent McCollis, as you mentioned earlier tonight. Southwest Metro also runs a, a school resource officer program. And so that's what they use the Safe Schools Levy portion for, is a school resource officer, safety equipment, and then non-instructional technology hardware. And I'm just reading right through the resolution here. The total amount for that is budgeted at about $214,000 for next year, again, based off of utilization. Our portion of that total would be just shy of $60,000. So $59,807 related to the Safe Schools Levy for Southwest Metro, 288.
Just a quick comment, just to differentiate, this, calling the safety levy versus any of the reunification work that's been going on, are those separate in distinction?
We, when it comes to reunification efforts, we partner with Southwest Metro. Remember, they came to us some time ago and they were starting to plan. And we just said, why don't you use our plans and now they're working under that umbrella? But it's a different.
It's a different. That's right, yes. This is, this is, I want to, we approved these in the past and this is consistent with, as you described, how Southwest Metro works with LTFM and I had surveyed this with safety revision. I just wanted to make that point, that this is independent from the reunification partnership.
Yep, as a, as a school district in Chocopee, we also receive Safe Schools revenue. And we, we use, coincidentally, the Safe Schools revenue that we receive for a school resource officer, that's obviously an important part of that process. What we're asking the board to take action on tonight is the Safe School portion specifically. So obviously they're related, but they're separate.
And I just wanted to make that clarification.
Good, good question.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve. A motion by Brophy and a second by Peterson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a resolution. Amber, can you please do the roll?
Sidetick.
Yes.
Valdez. Peterson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Aldrich.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Brophy.
Yes.
Resolution passes. Bill has one more item for us, the consideration, item eight point seven, the consideration to approve the fiscal year twenty-six budget.
Yes, thank you. And specifically thanks to Amber for following along, all the different attachments and everything else. So on your screen, you will see the 2025-26 adopted budget presentation. I will refer to this as probably 25-26 adopted budget, maybe fiscal 26. Tackle back and forth between those two. But if I do that, I know that I'm referring to the same year, and that is next year. So the year started July first, so coming up next week. Going to page two that's on your screen, our budget process and timeline leading up to this point. We started this way back in, in really January internally, having these discussions. But from a forward-facing standpoint, the Finance and Facilities Committee reviewed and discussed the 25-26 fiscal 26 budget at both meetings in April, both on April 14th and April 28th. The school board then had a chance to review and discuss the 25-26 budget on May 18th. That's when we really did a deep dive on not only the general fund, but our other funds as well on May 18th. And there you see just the state statutes that require school districts to approve a budget prior to the start of the year on July 1st, which is why we're bringing this for approval on tonight, on June 23rd. After this, the budget is approved, it will be available, the budget in total will be available on the school district website. And then rather than go through the forty-some majors that we reviewed on May 18th, I just included select summary pages in this presentation. But I did put at your place the completed budget in total, if you would like to read through that as well. So starting first with the letter of introduction, just a couple of highlights to read the complete letter of introduction. But our finance team really does value the collaboration with the school board, the School Board Finance and Facilities Committee, Dr. Redman, and also our community. As I mentioned previously, a budget is nothing more than developing some annual budget assumptions. And that's what you have here on the letter of introduction. So on the bullet points down below, the major budget assumptions for next year's budget include an operating levy authority of $1,371.84 per pupil, which includes a 2.34% inflationary factor. And there you can see the cap there as well. Obviously, we're well below the state approved cap for fiscal 26. The state aid per pupil formula amount increased by 2.74%. The formula allowance for next year at $7,281 per pupil. And you'll see later on in the presentation what that actually means in terms of revenue related to that inflationary factor when added to the enrollment projection for next year. And then speaking of enrollment projection, the third bullet point, we have budget enrollment projection of 7,457 students, which is a decrease of 82 students, or about 1% from their projections. So as we've discussed at length, we're in a period of natural decline in student enrollment, primarily driven by declining birth rates in Scott County, which is obviously the Chocopee School District. Going now to really the meat and potatoes of this document, our statement of operating and non-operating funds. Starting at the top, the way that this reads is by funds. You can see our general fund, food service fund, our community service fund, our debt service fund, our internal service fund, which is our self-funded, funded health and dental, and then our trust fund, which is our OPEB standing for Other Post-Employment Benefits, and our scholarship account. And you can see our projected fund balance as of July 1st of 2025 for each of those funds. And I should mention that that is the fund balance in total, right? So obviously, the $31.9 million fund balance projected for the general fund includes not only our unassigned fund balance, but overall of our categorical fund balances as well. And then you can see our projected revenue and expenditures, and then our fund balance projection for June 30th of 2026. And so in total for next year, we are projecting revenue of $167.3 million and expenditures of $174 million. Down below, we can unpack the different components of fund balance. Starting first with the general fund unassigned fund balance, which as we know is the overall measure of financial health in the general fund. The good news on this front is we are projected to remain at 10%. So next year, as of June 30th, 2026, we expect there to be a $13.183 million, which is good for, for 10% of our general fund expenditures. The non-spendable, spendable category is just an accounting function to account for things like inventory and prepaid expenditures. They keep that amount the same because we just don't know what amounts will fall on each of those inventory or prepaid buckets at the end of the year. You can see our account for long-term facility maintenance is, is projected to remain flat for next year. And then go to operating capital. So you see that we have expected deficit spending for operating capital of above $1.86 million. As we've talked about, we have a curriculum adoption plan under our learning, teaching, and equity department. And that's a planned spend down related to those curriculum needs in fiscal 26. Our capital projects, technology levy is expected to be balanced for next year, which brings me to our restricted other and our assigned for district programming. So as you can see, in order to remain at 10% for next year, we are projecting a spend down, a significant spend down in both our restricted and assigned categories. As we've talked about, as we talked about in May and previously at our Finance and Facilities Committee, that is a one-time opportunity that we have. In order to do that, we've, we've talked in terms of utilizing that assigned for district programming for a rainy day fund, for lack of a better term, and we are recommending to do that for next year. Now, the good news is that helps us remain at 10%. However, obviously, that is a one-time opportunity. We won't have a chance to do that in the next year, being fiscal 27. Going to the next page then, and looking at the next two slides are enrollment. So obviously, projecting enrollment is an integral part of, of developing a budget process. Approximately 75% of our general fund revenue is from the state. A majority of this funding is based on student count. So an understanding of population trends is critical to overall budget plans. And you can see that dating back to fiscal year 2020, so during COVID times, our total ADM, which is student count, was 8,189 students. And then for next year, our budget that I mentioned is 7,457 students. So a pretty significant decrease in enrollment over the last six years dating back to fiscal 2020. And as Dr. Redman has mentioned in previous financial presentations, and we've talked about at length, that's one of the main contributing factors, is our decline in student enrollment that contributed to our structural imbalance, along with the inflation that we've talked about before. So then looking at projected enrollment, we've developed the following enrollment assumptions for next year. And I'll just review those, those are letters eight through E. Our kindergarten projection of 424 students, which is an increase of four students from this year. Kindergarten through grade eight, growth projection based off of enrollment trend data. We're including an increase of 68 students from grade eight to grade nine, primarily driven by our non-public, primarily Saks students that are in all of the high school. Post-secondary enrollment option, PSEL estimate of about 60 students based off of history again. And then early childhood and tuition estimates based off of a five-year history. And so you can see that our period of natural decline in student enrollment is forecast to continue at least until fiscal year 2028, and most likely beyond that time period as well. Going now to slide seven, and just looking. and just looking at two pie charts showing revenue and expenditures for all funds. And this really underscores what a big piece of the pie the general fund is. You can see on the revenue side, general fund revenue accounts for just over 75% of our total revenue for all funds. And then on the expenditure side, general fund expenditures account for 76% of all funds as well. The last two slides, I'd like to just talk through some of our general funds. So again, we're looking at specifically the general fund and looking at our assumptions. So first on the revenue assumptions, you can see at the top, our general fund revenue is projected to decrease by about $728,000 or a negative 0.5% from this year. So anytime you're looking at general fund revenue, which again is 75% of our total, and the projection for year-over-year is actually a decrease in revenue, that is a challenge from a budget standpoint for sure. From a state aid standpoint, our overall state aid is projected to decrease by about $360,000 for next year, 4.4% from the 24-25 year. Our property tax revenue, which again is based largely on student enrollment, is projected to decrease by about $457,000 or 1.7% from this year. The decrease is attributed to declining people unit, student estimates, as I mentioned. And then our federal revenue is projected to decrease by about $209,000 or 9% from this year's levels. Now, the decrease in federal is attributed to budgeting for special education aid, which is fairly conservative from a preliminary standpoint, as well as the expiration of one-time pandemic-related funds, and even $130,000. And then lastly, at the bottom, it was requested last year that I put together a revenue per student projection. And so you can see that this year, based off of our enrollment projection of 7,539, and our general fund revenue amount of 126.2 million, the revenue per student that we would project this year would be $16,752 per student. And then looking at next year's projection. Did I say million?
Yes, you did.
That's new.
Wow.
That's new.
That helps a little bit.
Yep, that'll be great. $16,000, thank you. Next year, 7,457 students, and you can see the general fund revenue projection. So the overall increase is about $87 per student from this year to next year of the general fund. Going now to slide nine, general fund expenditure assumptions. You can see the general fund expenditures are projected to increase by about $5.26 million, which is 3.9% from this year. So although that $5.2 million figure is a large number, it's all, our general fund expenditures are only projected to increase by about 3.9, slightly less than 4%. Obviously, salary, wages, and employee benefits is the largest chunk of the pie in the general fund, and the budget for salary, wages, and employee benefits for next year is projected to be 102.3 million. And that includes salaries, wages, and benefits for all our eight groups. Increase overall of about 4.2% from fiscal 25. The budget for salary, wages, and employee benefits represents 77% of the total general fund budget. And you can see the status of employee contracts for next year. The three contracts that expire as of the end of this year are the Chalky Education Association, the SDA, the principals, and the unaffiliated slash directors. And that's why I have negotiations upcoming, or in some cases started, for each of those contracts. So with all of that, I would go to slide 10, which is the summary of acknowledgements. The budget publication that you see requires many hours of preparation, review, and deliberation by the board, our School Board Finance and Facilities Committee, who had a chance to review this document ahead of the meeting tonight, building and district administration, and my finance department team. Thank you to my team, both in finance and payroll, for their many hours of working on this, and also the other stakeholders on our leadership team for their time and attention in looking at this budget document. Overall, the grand total budget revenues for total all funds are $167,326,700, and the grand total budget expenditures are $174,068,250. And as I reflect on this budget, I think I'd like to say that although it may not be the numbers that we all prefer in terms of the revenue and expenditure total, I feel like the numbers on this document are numbers that can be relied upon for financial decisions and recommendations moving forward. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions if you have.
I have a couple of questions, Bill. Hypothetical, if the federal government decides they're going to slash education budgets and funding to our schools, and the state has a special session, and they reduce education funding even further to schools for the next biennium, are we, do you think, would be allowed to go back and adjust our budgets accordingly? Or would we have to wait until January when we have to submit our revised budget to the state? I mean, how would we handle that sort of situation? I mean, we're approving a budget, just like the legislature approved a budget. If the feds change, they're going to go back and do a special session and adjust their budgets. How does that, how do we handle that as a school district?
Yeah, I think, you know, thinking about it specifically from the federal level, so we're talking about Title I, II, III, federal special ed, and things of that nature, I think the recommendation that I would have would be to approve the budget based on what we know to be true, which is this.
Right.
And then there's nothing that says that a board could not revise a budget ahead of the January timeline, and we usually have done that. If the feds made a change in August or September, October, the board could react to that and do a revised budget earlier. You could do a revised budget in October. There's also nothing that says you couldn't do, you have to, you can only do just one revised budget, right? So you could do a revised budget in October and then do another one in May. There are school districts that will do a final revised budget in late May, just trying to get those variances down as much as possible related to the audit. Historically, we haven't done that, but there's nothing that says you have to just, you can only do one revised budget too. So I don't know if that directly answers your question, but that's what the criteria.
I mean, it's kind of unprecedented, right? I've never seen that happen before, where we had changes at the federal level that tripled down to the state, and then therefore the budgets could adjust. And maybe it's happened in the past, but I was just curious on that point. And then the other item that I had a thought on was, I can't remember which one it was. It's too late the day on Monday. One thing I was going to say on page 11 in the clock that he gave us, I think it would be important moving forward on the general education formula allowance chart to make a notation about that 2.7%, if that was the start of the inflation index, and that that really wasn't, while it was an increase on the general formula, it was not specific like years past. So, and what I mean by that is that 2.7% was not supposed to be a replacement to the normal 2% allowance that you see in any previous years before that.
Sure.
I just think that would be an important item to note for future boards moving forward that may not have that history, to understand if somebody says, well, you typically follow here, we got 2.7. Well, really, you shouldn't have had 4.7 if you follow the historical trends. Probably only a 2.7. But that, this is really the first year that we've got that in inflation index. So I think that's important to call on.
That makes sense. We'll make that note. Thank you.
And then one thing that Bill and I exchanged messages about today was in regards to that 2.7%, that that is just on the general education formula. That is not across all categories. So I think that's also an important item for everybody to know, is that that doesn't hit community ed, that doesn't hit food service. All of the special categorical funding, that does not tie to the general formula allowance, would not get that 2.74%.
Correct. What's your distinction between this 2.7 and the other, we have 11 years of percentage increases.
So the other, so this 2.7% is actually what they gave us for inflation on the formula. We've not had that in years past. This is the very first year.
No, 2%.
That's not inflation. That was just what they allowed. So when that bill was passed a couple of years ago, the intent was to give the inflation index on top of what they normally would give, like the 2%, but that didn't happen. And that's what we, school districts feared what would happen. And so it kind of was a replacement this time around, and probably will be into the future. I mean, the only way to change it really, I think, is in school. One thing has to change in order for that to be fixed. But, so while it looks like it's an increase. But if we wanted to have that inflation index, we probably would have been able to have two, would be my guess. So it did save us, but the intent was not for it to be a replacement. It was supposed to be in addition to an increase on the formula. Because the inflation is supposed to be just that, to help school districts close that gap on that chart that you see in a lot of our presentations on the financial position, of how the formula increases and the law of inflation just continues to lighten. So this was supposed to, this 2.74 was, 2.7 was supposed to unclose the gap, but then they didn't give us the 2% on top of the 2.7, and so the gap continues to lighten.
I'm generally an optimist too, because you're looking at 2.7 being the second highest in 11 years that it's allowed. I'm just not, you know, optimistic that we're going to get a 4.5 or 4.7 comparison.
I don't think so either. But I'm just saying, that was the intent. When that bill was passed, it was not a one or the other. It was in addition to help close the gap.
Further discussion?
I just have a comment on, you know, the general fund expenditure going up 3.9%. It's not bad. It's probably what most businesses would probably budget. I know that when I go through, I do 3% or 4% on everything. It's the revenue decreasing by 727,000. That's why we have such the massive $6 million gap. It's just less students, which is reality. But, you know, less students, you still have supplies, you still have purchases, you still have 1,200 employees. You still have teachers. It's just one of those things that it's unfortunate. Because I quickly, the amount of students that have, we decreased, wherever that page was, it was 745 from, where was it? It's in there somewhere, but it's been 745 students since 2020. And that's just, that's a hard number to make up, because if you look at revenue per student at 16,000, that's 745 at 16,000. I'm not going to do that math in my head, but, yeah. I knew it somewhere from 11, so, yeah. That's significant, and that is reality. But it's just one of those things that if anybody points out, it's like our expenditures aren't going up 15% a year. It's just the students that, obviously, if we had more students, we'd have, we'd have a greater expenditure because we'd have more teachers. But it's unfortunate.
I do have one other question.
Sure.
On the presentation we had when Ben was here in Wolf, it had the LTFM balance at like 1.4, and on here, it was like, it's 3.5. Is there two different funding mechanisms in that 3.5?
No, it's timing. And I'm betting about it's timing related to summer projects, where Ben had that in his, and I don't have that. It's timing related to this summer's type projects. And I wish that Ben, because he had, I asked Ben that fair question. So obviously, fiscal year runs July or June, so whether you have projects in June or July can drastically depend on what your fund balance is. And so that's what the difference is, is related to that time.
Yeah, it's just when, because I knew earlier as 3.5, and then it came up with 1.4, I'm like, yeah, just across it.
No, those numbers don't.
Thank you.
I guess I have one more comment to do. You know, to this topic that we're speaking on right now for next year's budget, it's clear that, to the credit of everybody in this room, that the financial outlook of the schools is really pretty good right now going into next year, but it's, a lot of change has to happen. And so then we're, it's nice that we have the ability to do what we're doing here, to borrow or to run out of deficit and keep our product intact. But I think it's clear to all of us that something's got to change. Like next year, sitting here at this time, we will not have that ability to do that. So to me, the red flag's up, like something's got to change for sure, and we all know what the options and tools are. I think that the fact that you guys have built this key that we can use, for lack of a better term, right now is lower down to my level here, you know, but it's great, honestly, for our kids and for our community. But how long can we do that, you know?
I would make a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the 25-26 adopted budget. Second.
Motion by Aldrich and a second by Brophy. Further discussion? See none, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. Approve. Motion carries.
Real quick, I, sit down. Please sit down. I just, I just want to thank Bill for the years of service. I know we still have him for a couple of months, but since this is the last budget that he has to put forward, I just want to publicly acknowledge everything that you've done for the district since 2019, at the end of 2019, when you came on board. And just, you know, we've worked together really well for the last almost six years. And it's sad to see you go, but I'm glad for your future, that you found a great landing spot. And just, I'm just wanting to say thank you for everything that you've done.
Thanks, Bill. Appreciate that.
And just say, sit down. It sounds awkwardly.
No, I'll let go the same thing. We kind of started at the same time, it feels like, and knowing where we were as a district, and your expertise and your thoughts and creativity around getting us back to financial stability have been significant. And a lot of that is just because of you and your knowledge and your abilities. You will be greatly missed in this district. Whoever replaces you will have big shoes to fill because you've done tremendous work here, and I know our community feels the same way with the state of our district right now. So, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for saying that. I, one thing I absolutely love about working in Chalky is the fact that, in fact, about this, at my, the board, our administration, they don't treat finance as a problem that pops up every few years, and then you deal with it, and then you just go away, right? It is an ongoing topic that we discuss. And that makes me feel valued in my role. And I can add, if I was going to stay in the public education, I would be right here. This is where I want to be. I wouldn't go anywhere else. I would want to work with Dr. Redman, the leadership team, this board. This is very much the only home, you know, with the community here. So thank you for the comments. Very, very much appreciate it.
We'll have more opportunities.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not.
If you have it for two more months, come with the whole budget, Bill.
Play this thing. Thank you, Bill.
Okay, thank you.
Our next item is another action item, item 8.8, approval of the EPO agreement, and Jim McCloskey's report.
Thank you, Chair Smith. Members of the board, this is the reapproval of the agreement. If you remember, two weeks ago, I brought it to you and mentioned that our attorneys were still ironing out final details, but given the time of year and the need for us to start moving forward with getting preparing information so our students can be enrolled through the fall, we did something to prove. But given the time of year and the need for us to start moving forward with getting inquiry information so our students can be enrolled through the fall, we did something approved. Um, there were two clarifications in the contract that no, both which I would say we believe to be true heading into the first contract. The first one was just about what we are paying Eden Prairie for the services, meaning we are paying them for the credits that students have. And then also just a clarification of, like, in the unfortunate case of student discipline, uh, that we would own the student if the student were, for any reason, has to leave EPO. Again, both of those were things that, that we believed to be true prior to asking for the initial approval of the contract. Wanted to bring it back to you in the name of transparency. Questions?
This is a one-year?
One-year, one-year contract, and this, um, our attorneys are now completely done with it. And so this will be the last time you will see it until sometime, you know, next late spring, at which point we hope that this will become a long-term agreement.
As good as acid could go by year, maybe if it works out well, we'll do it through year by year agreement?
Yes, that is, that is the stated goal. We've had that conversation with Eden Prairie and attorneys felt it was best for us to have a one-year period. And again, there'll be ongoing meetings between myself and the Assistant Superintendent from Eden Prairie about how this is working for all groups.
And just to expand on that, do you have metrics in mind in terms of measuring what that success is with a similar dollar or, you know, student achievement? Most things are sort of making me weak about this that would be measured in the last.
I think we'll obviously be looking at those things. I think the reality is we know that we have a certain number of students looking for this type of programming. And it benefits us to have a formal provider as opposed to the current process, which is councilor scrambling and trying to figure out who will best meet student needs. That we believe that EPO will meet the needs best of all of our students. And again, as we stated, provide them the opportunity to graduate with a Chalky diploma, which isn't always the case. Sometimes students end up getting diplomas from other school districts, but they would rather remain at Chalky.
I make a motion to reapprove the contract with Eden Prairie on line as presented.
Second. Motion by Peterson and a second by Aldrich. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jim. Next on our agenda is an information item, item nine point one, District Financial Home Look. And, uh, Dr. Redmond will present.
Amber and I are gonna take off here on the board.
Switch your room.
That was pretty smooth. District financial update for this evening, and it's gonna look pretty familiar. Slides, I think it was slides three to twenty-six last time were from the presentation, the special school board meeting on June fourth. We've added a slide, so it's slides three to twenty-seven are representing that June fourth special school board meeting. The additional slide is a video of the meeting. And I don't wanna play it, but I might be okay, yeah, which is, which is early in that. And I can go back to any of these if there's questions, but I'm, you've seen this presentation multiple times.
Dr. Redmond, if I may? The slide with the graph of the inflationary gap, because, um, Mr. Redmond, as you were asking about that two point seven percent. And that's where Christie was making note. If, if the funding formula would have included an inflationary component, that gap would have been this.
Right.
And what I'm gonna do is try to summarize where I think we were on, at our last board meeting on June ninth. The school board was, was continuing to process things, looking at possible decisions. This slide is color-coded on purpose to kind of lay out, uh, you know, possible school board decisions. Or I think where we're, you know, on, on track to, to move. Uh, the light blue shading on the top there would be for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. We're projecting a seven to nine million dollar deficit. In light blue, it says three million in expenditure reductions, the bulleted points. Those are, you know, typically driven by declining enrollment and staffing adjustments, transportation adjustments. And again, we're not talking about changing walking distances. And then trying to also match our expenditures to state-provided revenues. Some of those have changed, some changed again this current, most recent legislative session. And we have some areas in terms of the support we're providing, um, that, you know, should, should also decrease some due to the enrollment decreases of the past few years. And then in yellow, highlighted, uh, we'll see this on, you know, in a couple of slides. But five million in new revenue could be generated if the school board were to approve a ballot measure, measure for November fourth, twenty twenty-five, in the form of an operating levy, which would need to be voted out by the community. Uh, this, this levy would be tax nu, a tax neutral levy that would shift from current bond payments to new payments for operations, uh, in terms of what's being paid by, in the taxpayers. And the other way of looking at that revenue would be six hundred and twenty dollars per pupil. And then there's a, uh, the, the kind of a bold O in the middle of that, you know, where we see the orange highlighted. And that is where five million in budget cuts across the board. That would be on top of the budget cuts that are highlighted in blue, the three million. And then the part in orange reads the additional five million in budget cuts are needed if the school board elects not to run an operating levy on November fourth, twenty twenty-five, or if that operating levy is run but is not approved by the voters. And then as you go down to the next section there, highlighted in yellow, two point three million in new revenue, uh, would be a possibility if the, uh, school board were to approve a second question for the operating levy. It would be contingent on the first question. The second question, uh, would bring the district to the cap or the maximum allowed by the state of Minnesota for school district operating levies of this type. This would add new taxes to support two hundred and eighty-eight dollars per pupil in additional revenue. And the revenue would be used to make sure the budget is balanced for twenty-six, twenty-seven. And then if there was, you know, additional funding there, additional revenues would be used to tackle part of the one to four million dollar deficit projected for the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year. You've got the small other with a question mark in the bottom left of that page. And then going into the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year, um, you know, the one to four million dollar deficit projected in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, uh, the two point three million in new revenue kind of continued. Uh, if the school board, you know, placed on the ballot and if voters approved a second question, uh, you know, that would, that would tackle, uh, part of that one to four million dollar deficit projected in twenty-seven, twenty-eight. In the no matter what category in light blue, typically we would make, you know, about a half million dollars in expenditure reductions if our projected decreases in enrollment for the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year exist then. And then again, some of those declining enrollment, uh, transportation adjustments. Again, not talking about changing walking distances, but we have fewer kids going to school. We have fewer kids being transported in total by buses. Therefore, we need, you know, slightly fewer routes to do that year over year with declining enrollment. And then again, you know, that making sure that, uh, district programming support is matching those, those decreases in revenue caused by decreases in enrollment. And then additional cross-support budget cuts is needed to balance the budget. And currently, the outlook for state funding, you know, of that for the twenty-eight, twenty-nine by end is concerning. Not, you know, focusing on the twenty-eight, twenty-nine school year directly this evening, but, um, looking out at, uh, that, that future certainly has challenges, it would appear. And then in, in that burnt orange color, additional budget cuts are due if the second question on the operating levy is not approved, uh, by the voters on November fourth. And then you get into the years beyond twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year, um, kind of repeat some of that in terms of, you know, the, the possible options on, on the table. If we, to move this forward and, and get into the discussion or a proposed action item, tried to summarize, um, the light blue on the previous slide. Yeah, the expectation is for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, we'll make three million in permanent expenditure reductions. That takes care of three million of a projected seven to nine million dollar deficit. From my, you know, seat at our last meeting, we kind of left off with a discussion of a possible action item. And putting this out, this could obviously become a motion of its own. It'd become changed, it'd become some other kind of a motion. But to give this group a, a starting point from where to discuss, uh, most of the discussion at our June ninth meeting was kind of pointing towards the possibility of a two-question operating levy with, uh, question one being the tax-neutral part of that. The, uh, the five million or five million and fifty-two dollars, uh, in new annual operating revenue that would be generated by a six hundred and twenty dollar per pupil, um, amount for that, uh, operating levy. This would be tax-neutral in, in the sense of the shift from current bond payments, uh, that end after, you know, at the end of about the twenty, twenty-five calendar year, to be replaced by new operating levy payments starting in calendar year twenty-six. Uh, this levy, question one, would be linked to inflation. Final ballot language, knowing that we were gonna have more discussions this evening, uh, would be, you know, the board approves that this, uh, this, this evening. We would then have the final ballot language and all the other parts of that election, uh, that are required by state law at our, you know, the formalities, if you will, that are July twenty-eighth, uh, upcoming board meeting. And then question two, uh, if a second question were asked, it would be contingent on approval of question one, meaning question one is not approved by the voters, it doesn't matter, the vote totals on question two, question two cannot pass if the voters did not approve question one. Uh, that would be approximately two hundred and eighty dollars per pupil in new revenue. That would, is estimated to, to provide approximately two, two million, three hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and five dollars in new annual operating revenue. This is because the Department of Education has not finalized exactly where the cap is for next school year. They'll be doing that in the next couple of weeks. Uh, but that is the estimate given to us by our financial experts who work with PMA. This levy would also, the levy amount would also be linked to inflation. And again, the final ballot language, you know, all those formalities for the election, the exact dollar amounts would then be, uh, shared at the July twenty-eighth board meeting and brought to the board for approval. So questions on anything or anything else?
All right. Clarification? Uh, I'm glad Bill's still here. Um, in, in the budget, you have the levy cap at two thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty-one cents. Is that the actual number or was that an approximation?
That's the actual number for, um, for, for taxes payable two thousand and twenty-five. And so that's the number that will be updated.
So we don't know. All right.
Correct. Yeah.
They'll go by the rate of inflation, but that is not the same calculation actually as the per pupil aid. Slightly different. It's kind of calculated in a similar way, but slightly different.
Because that difference was eight hundred and ninety-four dollars and forty-seven cents, which would do, the, the question two then, if that was part of it, would be two seventy-four, forty-seven, but with inflation, to two eighty-eight.
Yeah, that's probably.
But a great point. That's why instead of using two seventy-four, which would have held it flat, PMA trying to estimate what they think MDU will do, gave, gave us two eighty-eight, which we think is probably a few dollars in either direction from accurate.
And Dr. Redmond, just to clarify, when we get into discussion, even though we're talking about this question wants to be tax-neutral, can you confirm that the language on the ballot will still make it sound as though it's a tax increase? Because from a, uh, legally and otherwise, per state statute, you can't use a, uh, like, in this case, the operating, might be rolling off of the building, off the bond, offsetting the expense of the operating levy, uh, for general fund. And that's just a point of clarification. Should the eyes of the individual who's going to vote on question one or question, whatever decisions we make tonight, the language on the ballot will say it's a tax increase. And so we just have to be really clear in that messaging, um, if and when we get to that point.
And the answer to that is yes. That language must be on the ballot by state law. And in, in essence, what is happening is in twenty twenty-five, we're paying off debt. That tax ends officially at, you know, December thirty-one of twenty twenty-five. The amount of that in terms of what taxpayer, the total amount of taxpayers are paying if they were to approve operating question one, our total taxes would be the same in calendar year twenty twenty-six as they were in twenty twenty-five. But one form of taxes is going, you know, is decreasing by five million. And it is a new operating levy that is added, you know, that's a little bit over five million. And that is because it is a new operating levy, a new form of tax that's being added. That is why that ballot language would be, you know, the property tax increase language would be on the ballot for question one, as it would be for question two.
I have a question on the information you have on the screen of the possible action item. Well, this is specific to the ballot measure. I don't see anything about an action item to also include budget cuts of three million. That is still part of, if, if the board did approve the question one, question two, ballot question tonight, we would also be making three million dollars in budget cut, cuts no matter what?
Yes. And whether if we wanna, you know, I think.
I just wanted to clarify that. Because right, I think this looks like we wouldn't be doing that, but.
No, crystal clear. That left on the previous page, but highlighted in light blue saying that's no matter what. I think sometimes people get, oh, if we pass this, then we're not making the three million in budget cuts. But, but exactly, we are making three million in budget cuts no matter what. The question is whether we're making another five million to bring it to a total of eight million. And thought rather leaving this part where we would need to be an action item for the board at this time. If you wanted to make one that, uh, you know, we're expecting to make three million in permanent budget cuts, too, that's fine. I just, you know, that's our plan to balance the budget. So you, you will also approve it when we, you know, we bring forth that budget. And if it's not in there, I would suggest not approving that budget. It'll be in there.
Well, I mean, I just, you know, we've seen this information multiple times now in a lot of different ways. I just don't see a way around this. I, I guess I'll make a motion to approve what's on the screen, um, to approve a ballot measure for a question one. And with the information presented as well as a question two, uh, with the addition of three million dollars in permanent budget cuts, regardless of the success of the ballot questions.
I will second. So we have, we have a motion in the second, uh, as presented. So we do need to have the extra language of the three million budget cuts beyond what is on the screen here. Discussion?
Tim. Uh, and I know there's been some conversation, like, we, it's, it's a, almost a no there. No one appreciates a tax increase. I'll give that. To sustain the financial health of the district, we, we need to pursue maxing to the, you know, the total levy amount. We've kind of talked about, do we do it as a, you know, a question one, question two, or just one question on the ballot for all of it? I like this approach because you don't want to sacrifice the opportunity to get at least the five million. That feels like an easy conversation to have. So don't, don't put five million at risk just to get the extra two point three or whatever the number is. So I'm, I'm in favor of that for that reason, knowing full well that I'm gonna advocate, you know, let's try to pass vote. And I like how you bring it to with an additional, so the three million is, is cut regardless. The question is, do, yeah, we cut another, right? Do you, the five plus the two, right? Or do you cut an additional two point three because that, that three million becomes five point, right? Five point three in a hurry. And what does that mean for, call it the twenty-six, or the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year? I just wanted to call that out because I had spoken previously about, we just need all of it. We need to go to the cap. But I like this approach because it at least affords the, you know, the taxpayers and those of the and those in the district to, uh, see the transparency. Um, and I'll wait, make one more, uh, comment. When we start talking about, we did some of those, like, what's the net tax impact per average median, total price and those things? Uh, and Dr. Rittman can confirm this, but I just want to call it out. You have to look at it in current state, that is, the net tax capacity in all the homes and all the things. You have to show the numbers as it is today. We're talking about really calling years two and three from now, assuming there's no growth for the district, right? So the tax burden, the tax impact, we could spread over a larger tax base. Um, so that's another way to look at it, like, yes, it's still a tax increase, but by year two, by year three, at twenty seven, twenty-eight. Conceptually, board is approving question four to, what, they would see less of that by that timeframe.
That's exactly how we framed it several years ago, where, yeah, it's seven point three million dollars, but it's seven point three million dollars on all the, all the property in, in the district. We're building houses, we're building hotels.
Industrial, it's all.
Yeah, it's, it's all, it's all combined, so.
Tips are.
Tips are indeed.
So, you know, and I had not even, I had not even considered that, right? There was a, there were a lot of tips, particularly in the industrial space. Um, like, well, fun about that, but the denominator keeps getting bigger and the amount that we can levy for is just based on student population. So in a sense, the numerator stays, we use the word fixed, we know that that's not the case, but, um, the amount of money that's going from a revenue perspective based on levy is relatively unchanged, but the denominator is bigger as the district grows, as the community grows. Uh, we, but you can't use that in part of your messaging either.
We can't use assumptions.
You have to leave the denominator at a point in time, and I don't know if that's as of November when, like, Secretary of State or the official language is, but Dr. Rittman, if you want to offer some context there as well.
That's all called out, we'll have all that July twenty-eighth, but there are specific dates when you've got to have the ballot language and there are specific ways it has to be written. And we look at, you know, to your point, it's not a choice, it's the expectation, state laws, we present everything as though it's static moving forward, which typically becomes a, you know, in a growing community, in terms of a growing total tax base, tends, tends to become a conservative projection, but we're not, we're not allowed, nor would I think it'd be prudent to, uh, you know, have individual districts try to make their own estimates of what the future is going to happen in a local economy. So it makes sense, but, you know, yeah, some folks who have a, a deeper understanding of economics get, yeah, the, the total pie is getting bigger, their, their own individual share gets smaller.
And we basically are making assumptions that there will be no growth.
Correct.
And we have to, because there might not be any.
Agreed.
Well, for the last two years.
Yeah, what did we just vote on earlier, having to do?
Well, in the last two years, my, my school taxes on my house, which is valued at four hundred thousand dollars, so that's the average, my school taxes have dropped a hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-two cents. If both question one and two pass, my taxes go up ninety-three dollars or ninety-seven dollars.
Ninety-seven, I believe.
So.
Over, is it still?
I'm still under, I'm still paying less, and that is, again, considering or taking an assumption there's no growth.
No growth. And what, and I'm, and I totally, that's why I was asking how the state demographer comes up with population increase, because we just saw an extra thousand people show up, uh, in what would be considered Shockley proper. And so if that's any indication, I'd just like to understand as a timeline, you know, again, it'd be, it's not prudent for us to determine what that, that looks like, but I think it's reasonable to expect the districts going to continue to grow at a healthy pace.
And since twenty twenty, it's dropped two hundred and thirty-one dollars, and that's with the levy that passed and the increase, uh, in twenty twenty-two.
That's good, that's really good context too, so.
Well, one of the thoughts I had on this is the challenge and the great points that have been brought up about what we can actually put on the ballot and what the community is going to know, right? So we're going to have to make decisions in the interface, even if we're voting yes or approving this. I, myself, as a voter five years ago, do not recall if I voted yes or no, and running around with my chin with my head cut out, paying attention to what I wanted to pay attention to, just looking ahead at myself as an average voter or whatever. So, I mean, without a conscious effort of a lot of communication going out about all the things we're talking about, the tax base, the, the, the bond falling off, you know, it being a neutral thing, when you, when, when people walk into the polls and they read that one question, how that will go after having done this now a few times in our community concerns me. So I think that, you know, there's going to take a concerted effort to, to, to get that done. I mean, you guys would know better, but what are we, the, are we the largest employer in Scott County or, or Shockley something, that's the largest?
They're third.
Third largest, okay.
Yeah, St. Brans is.
Is it, okay, fair enough, but we drive our income up with really taxes, we can't just shut down a department or whatever when the numbers don't add up. So without diminishing our product, I keep saying that, our service, right, is our staff and we've proven eighty percent of our budget goes to that. I'm all for this, I, I sure hope that it actually, the community realizes that it is needed, it's not. I don't think, you don't make a commission, do you? I haven't been a part of.
Me?
Yeah.
No.
I don't think there's any other reason.
I just do a lot of extra work presenting and sharing information that isn't always pleasant for people to hear, so.
My worry is.
Well, I, I can say that, just some feedback over the weekend that I got in, in my neighborhood about, just talking about this decision that we were having to make today. Um, the board has, school district has a whole lot more credibility today than we had with the last levy because of the performance of our being good stewards of the taxpayer dollar. And that almost came out verbatim. Um, and that, when I said, you know, if we did this, this is about what the tax impact would be, and they were like, oh, nine dollar a month.
Don't just say that because it's somebody.
But that, but I'm just, right, but I'm just saying, that was the feedback that I got. Everybody's going to feel that.
The challenge is that, like, we have to, now we have a PR campaign that we have to run to educate people on all of this because we're so limited and hamstrung by the required ballot language. So now, our worries are to be able to enough energize people that we can rely on to help with that effort. Um, because that's just, because, you know, because when we say it that way, like, you talk to, like, most reasonable people and you say, oh, yeah, that's, that's totally worth it. Um, but, uh, but we, now we have to, we're in charge of making that as a struggle.
So in twenty twenty, when we went for the first one and it failed, I believe, it was seven four three, fifty-eight, forty, something like that, I was not surprised. That was three years after.
During, it was during.
It was during COVID.
COVID, during the presidential campaign.
Right, but it was also, I don't think, after what happened in twenty seventeen, twenty-eight, you know, during the, during that debacle, for lack of a better term, that Shockley was ready to give the district more money to, as I heard people say, how are you going to spend this money? What we did, I think, in, in twenty twenty, it's like, okay, if this doesn't pass, this is, this is the cuts, and then we did that. In twenty-one, both, uh, the two questions passed, I believe sixty-seven percent, sixty-three to sixty-seven percent. The, the, the tech levy last year passed at about the same level. I think, and I, I said this earlier today, you know, you, you build up trust and you build up trust and you can lose that very quickly, like, wait, it takes ten years to build up the trust and you can lose it in a minute. And I think we, if we just keep doing what we've said, what we're going to do, that the community should be able to put their trust in us and the district for doing the, the right thing. And by putting this out there on the ballot, as I said at a different meeting, uh, we're allowing Shockley to determine what kind of school district that they, that they want.
And just to add on to that, after all your comments, I mean, it's spot on, because the district has done so well to manage the resources that we, like, pandemic resources and, uh, development designs and training, like, developing our talent within, putting us in a position where we don't have to make significant cuts this year or next year, right? Um, so you look at the health of the district, I think the other, um, I don't want to call it advantage, it's unfortunate case in funding in Minnesota of public education, the two of it are eleven neighboring districts that are cutting, have significant budget cuts on their horizon, we're not alone. Uh, we've also, because we didn't max the cap for the upper, I mean, that's, it's a tool on the tool lot. So again, no one wants to vote for a tax increase, but given the good stewardship, given the, you know, the savings in terms of refunding bonds and giving taxpayer dollars back, you know, the evidence that, you know, yeah, your, your home value I have appreciated, but the net tax that you're paying over that timeframe has actually been reduced by some of it. So I'm hoping that messaging is clear, this is an investment and education, this is, there's a return on that investment. Anecdotally, why is Shockley growing if the rate is growing? Where do people want to go? They want close to parks, recreation, and what's the other thing? Oh, a healthy school district, right? And so I'm, I'm hoping that that's part of this messaging, right? It isn't just Shockley needs more money, all of the schools need more revenue. Uh, and we're just in a place where what we're asking for isn't shooting for the moon, seems reasonable, and I'm hoping we build that trust with the community that says you can, uh, you can invest and, and feel confident it's a wise investment, we'll use those dollars well.
I think that we do a really great job at educating, so we all believe part of our school district, for being transparent, educating, um, the public of what we need. But what is, I have a question, what a question two does not have, I mean, I like how we're studying the output, does that mean more cuts?
That's, that was, brings up a good point, like, adding the three million into this, none of that's going to be determined prior to the potential of ever for the last year.
Right, we're not going to actually be voting on any of those particular cuts between now and then.
The two million?
Possibly.
Outside of the attrition, you said there's six hundred thousand built in that you would do anytime that you're having to be climbing in home.
Right. Yeah, I think it's a commitment to doing that. I think Caroline, to answer your question, we still have, we would have, again, we've got a seven to nine million dollar gap. Three million in permanent budget cuts plus five million in new operating levy for question one gets us right in the middle of that seven to nine. Now, we might have another million to cut for the twenties, yeah, the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. And then twenty-seven, twenty-eight, we do have one to four million projected, so we'll know better, you know, the further we get out, you know, enrollment, you know, the data, you know that, but, yeah, if question, if question one passes and question two doesn't, you know, we have to figure out how we're going to attack that twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
But we have three hundred and sixty-four days before we have to, for, for next year's adopted budget.
I think one point of clarification on the screen of eight, three million in expenditure reductions, I think that should be permanent expenditure reductions, that is not something that we would bring back.
I've been using that word, I can, well, we'll see, I can type it, I've struggled so far.
Like, I'm in agreement with that, but are we pitching a win or something? I mean, this, this is what we're telling our public, right? Essentially, it's not going to be on the ballot. So, perfect decisions we'd have to make any year, potentially three million in permanent reduction, knowing we have no additional revenue. So it might end up being four point two, it might be two point eight, I don't know, you know, whatever it ends up being, not knowing what our revenue is based on this, not knowing our enrollment, so many other variables. I think we're all under the understanding that these are the potential things that we're going to have to do. What does this change anything if we vote for this now, is make it to where we have to have exactly a minimum of three million in permanent.
And maybe you do want to, they, they make approximately three million. I know that the, that we already have a motion in a second with the term three million in there.
I mean, the details, you know, the.
Details are obviously to be, to be determined, I mean, if, if we feel that strongly about it, we could do an amendment to, to change that to.
You feel that there's three million that is relatively easy to cut at this moment, then, then it's, all right, we can do that.
Yeah, I don't think any, anything's easy to cut, I think it's, that is a, if we look at what we know, you know, for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, that seven to nine million, um, budget shortfall range appears to be a very good estimate, you know, that could change. Uh, I think, you know, I think it's a very reasonable expectation that we'll need to make at least three million in budget cuts. I think if something dramatically changes, uh, in a positive factor, you know, enrollment instead of decreasing by whatever, ends up being a hundred students higher than projected, uh, you know, we don't see that coming, we don't know that, if that, I think there's always that ability. Uh, I think this, we're, you know, we're making a commitment that we recognize that there should be some expenditure reductions in the mix, that we could do that. Will that impact our level of services? Yes, but that is not going to have anywhere near the impact that we end up making a total of eight million in permanent budget cuts in, in twenty-six, twenty-seven. Some of these are things where the, this date has targeted funding that has changed or shifted or not, you know, it's been at zero. Um, and some of them are areas where as we continue to dig in, we do make, some of our adjustments in our budget are kind of automatic for decreasing enrollment, these are others where you're going to take it a step further. Um, and when you factor in in that twenty-seven, twenty-eight year projection and some of the out-year projections, watched our legislature, their big discussion in education funding was, how long were they trying to balance the budget for? The, the governor and the senate wanted to, you know, they wanted deeper, they wanted less spending in the next two years so that they felt they had a better chance of balancing the two out-years fiscal twenty-eight and twenty-nine. So I think with that as a backdrop, I, I think the three million is, you know, setting that as an expectation. Um, I'm more concerned that we might have to end up, you know, going higher than that, especially as we go into twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Well, this is just for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, so it's a one-time.
Right.
So we could say for the, if, if it comes to that, we could, and, and a year from now, say for the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year, we need to make another two million, or one million, or five million, whatever it may be, based on what we know from a legislative and federal action.
Yeah.
We might make that permanent. Word, yeah, necessary.
Yeah, and I'm okay, I mean, I, the original put-up here didn't have the expenditure reductions, I think it's really important for the board to acknowledge that, district leadership, that, you know, we believe we're going to make three million in expenditure reductions for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, and that's part of why I left that off, because you start getting into the specifics of something that's a year from now, um, you know.
But I do think the community needs to know that, if we're going to make permanent budget cuts, they need to know that and they need to know what that dollar amount is, and I do still believe that they need to have some sort of framework as to what is part of that three million. You have to know approximately what the three million in budget cuts would be unless you just pull the number out of the sky. There has to be some sort of plan behind that number of how we would get there.
Well, I think some of it was truly off of, you could have a tax neutral question, one would raise five million to get to the middle of seven to nine, we need three billion. I think we know there are some places we have not done that deep analysis, but I do believe in looking at our budget and knowing how we work through different areas, that when you look at rightsizing based on student enrollment, there, there are some places to, to make those type of permanent reductions. But that is, that's kind of, that's our next phase, if you talk about our finance department, um, digging in, going through, and, and even taking in, I mean, you know, you're well aware, because I think you sent me the data, Christie, uh, part of balancing the budget. I think you sent me the data, Christie, of part of balancing the budget for the next biennium at the state legislature, there were some targeted funding cuts. And, you know, student smart services, and I think media related services, and we've still got to go through, both Jim and I spent some time online with AMST at Brightworks today where they're going through the legislative thing, I know Bill Menazi was, where you've got to go, all right, they literally just, after we staffed, cut our funding for some of those positions, we're locked in on that staffing for the next school year. So I think it's with that sort of a mindset that we know those things exist, you know, but we've got to go through and do the math and be able to call that out and have a rationale and total that out, but, you know.
Well, adding to Mike's point, I mean, this whole thing is such an unprecedented target, decided potential federal, you know, federal funding cuts, you know, it could impact state funding, you talk about targeted cuts, you know, we're still unpacking, now we get the compensatory revenue patch. I mean, there's, there's never been a time where there's been more moving parts and less predictability, and I think that the, the thing about this is we are trying to address the out-years, and I think that that's, you know, it's easy to look at one year or two years, I think it's looking at those out-years and trying to get yourself back to a place where there is more balance, and I think that that's what this proposal gives us the opportunity to do.
And I think you've got the four bullet points under the three million in expenditure reductions of what you've been looking at, and that's, and, you know, declining enrollment, staffing adjustments, transportation adjustments, not the walking distances, but other areas, reductions in specific areas to match expenditures to state provided revenues, which you just talked about, with the support services and special.
And there's others over the last couple of years.
So, I mean, they're all kind of listed there, so to me, that gave me the impression that by doing all four of those, that total approximately to eighty dollars.
Yeah, I think we have a decent level of confidence that it will, we just have not gotten any, done the deep accounting work that's needed to do that. To be honest, some of those are driven by a moment too. And, and it also, sorry, it calls out the difference of, you know, that we think our adjustments that we absolutely should be making in terms of rightsizing, in terms of ongoing revenue, having a structure, working to do the best we can to have a structured and balanced budget, where when we call out, and it's not on here, but we call out on the previous screens where, you know, the pieces in orange, well, those are, those are across the board, those are, that is a different nature of budget cuts. You know, should question one not be voted on or not be approved by the voters? If you're making five million in budget cuts after those other three million, which are kind of targeted towards, you know, state funding shifts and declining enrollment kind of adjustments, there's no way to cut that five million and not do that as across the board budget cuts, which then impact things like class sizes and our number of teachers. It impacts probably walking distances, it impacts programs that we offer, where you're not, you're not able to offer as many programs, or, you know, you have to do those, how we provide services is impacted. I would see it differently and on a more profound level, if that makes sense. Sorry, I need to touch on.
No, and I was just going to almost like flip the script. Let's assume no, no new revenue starting the 26, 27 school year. And then adding it up, correct my math, but wouldn't that be ten point three million, right? So the five plus the two point three is seven point three plus three million. Would we have to cut ten point three?
Well, part of question two's going into 27, 28.
Right, so that, that's mitigating some of that, but let's assume no new revenue in the 20, the 26, 27 school year.
In the two-year biennium, that, that's that approved, three percent.
Okay. So, so it's not as, maybe not as quick, but if we're talking, you're going to cut three million regardless, and then this additional, that's the seven to nine million dollar.
I think three's included in this.
Three is included in this.
Okay. Yep. So to some degree, this is just offsetting.
Well, as a citizen, when the last levy went, the, the cuts you guys had to make, most of you around the board were felt. I mean, like, really, everyone knew specifically, we're going to lose this, we're going to lose that, and then it actually happened, and then, whoa, what did we do? And, you know, we've gotten better results on the levies since then. I think us, as a, as a board and as a school district, have to be heard it, and figuring out what we're going to do prior to this election as far as if this doesn't pass, and have some idea of where these cuts are going to have to go. I don't expect that now or even by the end of the summer, I don't know how long that takes, but we got to figure out a realistic solution and plan for the worst, as we talked in a lot of the finance meetings and things like that, like.
Yeah, that comes, goes back to kind of the chats that earlier, Caroline too, about educating the, educating the public on the, the consequences, one way or another.
Yeah, I think, I think I understand better what you mean, Dr. Redmond, about the three millions. It's not easy to cut, but there are ways to do it without diminishing permanent programs and things like that. Is that, is that kind of what you mean by that? I mean.
Doing the best you can to do that.
Yeah.
And doing it where you've got declining enrollment, state funding doesn't compensate for that, you can't just roll funding, you know, you can't roll expenditures forward year over year with that reality. And like I said, some of that automatically adjusts. And certainly, we, we can begin to, you know, we can begin that work, that takes time and effort and thought to do that, and, you know, over the, you know, really probably into August and September. And again, first analysis is kind of finance team, let's go through and sort out even what, what is actually in there? Because we got a 2.7% per pupil funding increase. We also saw a reduction in special ed transportation revenue, we saw some other places where, you know, so that, that's some of the stuff that we've got to sort out, and then, you know, even look at what, what's kind of been in the, the biennium that just ended, that was similar to that. But then absolutely, you know, the, you know, kind of the board's direction and, and I think leadership is in agreement with that, so it's not, we could begin to give a better sense of when we use a phrase like across the board budget cuts, what does that look like? And some of that will look a lot like in the, that anchor spreadsheet. When we talk about where we make our expenditures, now some stuff, you know, operating capital for curriculum, that's, we can't take and spend that on salaries and benefits. But the other things, you know, those cost areas that are salaries and benefits and have some flexibility within them, you basically, you take that total five million and you go, what percentage is of that? And you look at that by the first lenses across the board, knowing that some categories are difficult to reduce, special education due to maintenance of effort laws and other things. You can't just unilaterally go, hey, we're going to offer 10% or 5% less in special ed services, because that's against the law. You'd have to have a maintenance of effort, and so you're kind of taking, that's a pretty big chunk of the budget that not, you're not taking completely off the table, but you're making at most some smaller marginal reductions. And then everything else, you're kind of going, all right, we've got to cut X percent of that, knowing full well that the bulk of that is what we pay people in salaries and benefits, and I think there's, you know, we've got to try to find that right balance. We don't want to cause undue alarm, but we also want to take, yeah, this is a very real thing, and we talk about across the, you know, kind of across the entire budget, what does that look like? We'll, we'll certainly do that work.
I apologize for asking this question in this setting, but if this, if the community doesn't get this message, and this levy doesn't get passed, we don't have this additional revenue, between December, I'm just kind of looking for, between December of this year till this time next year, do we, as a school board, vote on what has to be made, or do you present them specifically? Or do you just say, we're going to cut a billion in a certain?
I shared, and I can, I can reset that in a, in a rap, I think a long, long ago, we shared those previous ones, and we went to that specificity of what, what was going to be cut, and yeah, we'll certainly, we need to call that out, and we will do that. And then, yes, the board does, it's part of logic, the board approves the budget cuts, which lead into the budget, so.
But those cuts will have to be made before next year at this time, correct?
Yes, there's, we do our staffing.
Back staffing.
Has to be part of our staffing in the spring, I think that.
So it'll have to be early.
And that's kind of why I'm pretty good, like, why I'm advocating for the two-question approach, because if it feels like you can at least get support for question one.
Yeah.
You have almost another, if you could always put another vote out for the following year, pick up the balance. If you put in one question and it fails, you're going to be a year away from having another opportunity to vote for it.
Is there a third question you can ask, it's your nature, you know, if you put the tip button out there, you always get, the middle one gets picked.
So that's my, exactly my concern, is if you frame in as question one, question two, a lot of people are going to see as voting yes on one, no on two, as the moderate approach. And that's, that's the middle of the road, sensible Minnesota thing to do.
I, I think we have a, yeah, sorry, I need to cut you off.
Yeah, just, just that, but I just, I mean, it just, I go around and around with it because on one hand, it's very risky to go to just one question, and if we lose, that's a huge risk. On the other hand, I'm skeptical of both questions passing.
We, we have a very similar discussion in 2021.
Okay.
Because there are two questions on the ballot in 2021, and, and, and both, and both passed, but, but obviously, if two had a lower success rate than one did, sure, but.
Well, maybe I'm, I can't be enough, maybe I'm just worrying too much, as I'm not getting those credits or, you know, I'm talking to you.
Well, I hear what you're saying, like, do you want funding at all? You know, almost like, oh, a three question. Any interest at all? No. Do you want a partially funded? You know, like, I mean, or do you want to go all in?
Well, especially that both questions have to say, by voting yes, you are voting for it, that, that that language has to be stuck to both of those questions.
Right. Even in 2020, when, when it didn't pass, and it was, it was replacing basically a bond levy, and it was tax neutral, it still had to say, this is a tax increase, because it is, because at the end of 26, 25, what year is this? 25. Let's all run together. It is, that, that money on the bond, it's gone on the 2026 taxes. So this is a tax increase. Wow.
But they don't know that the taxes are coming down.
I mean, it doesn't affect your property.
There's no law that requires that.
Right. But that's, that's just, that's just the way it is.
All right, so any further discussion for the group here? We're starting to splinter off, you know, we'll, uh, further discussion toward the vote, or are we, we?
Oh.
So, can I just ask, if we have a word, do we need to make an amendment or not?
I was going to say, I think we either need to acknowledge that, we're going to try to clean the language up based on what you said, and is this an accurate representation of the intended motion? Or do we need to?
I would accept.
A lot of Robert's rules of I.
I think that because I made the motion, I can accept the additional word that was added in it without having to have done the, the motion that was originally made.
I'm, I'm fine with that, yeah, I mean, if, if you think that reflects the motion you made, I think we're fine with that. I, I second it as well, so. So we have the question before us, and it's been a motion by Peterson, second in place Matt, as stated on the screen, which you can all read, so I'm not going to read the whole thing. Question one and question two and the, and the bullet to recognize three million dollars in permanent expenditure reductions for 26, 27. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all who's in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Amber. Disembark? That didn't have to be a call.
It's not a resolution. If, if, uh, the outcome wasn't dealt, we would have, what's the word? We, we have contention. Division. We had a division, we were, we were doing.
Got it.
Uh, next on our agenda is item 11, committee reports and other information. Let's start the table.
Uh, no committee reports. I will say I'm looking forward to season number five, coaching with, let's not be wrong, my name, and I need to get in shape, just weeks away, but here we go, if you're possibly all.
Looking, looking forward to watching you this year.
You need to spectate.
Yeah. All right, thank you, Jeff.
I also do not have any committee reports. Pretty quiet on that point. I'm excited for, we have activities, I think, coming, I think.
What kind of activities?
We just had Andy Brown in, not too long ago, so.
Well, I was, I was going to pray, my son was, uh, filling on the fishing team for a couple of weekends, and I, a couple of weeks ago, he filled in, not part of the team, but went fishing with his buddy, and he came in at six out of 40. Last weekend, he came in first.
I love it. I didn't know that your son had filled in, I saw the fishing team.
Same, and I was on the team, just somebody was like, you know, can't come, you come.
Love it.
Jeff. Joe. Finance and facilities, earlier we went over LTFM and the budget, and that's, that's it?
Same, finance and facilities, and, Kim? Christie?
Um, a couple of things, in negotiations last week, our kickoff meeting, so that is underway. At Southwest Metro Board Meeting last Tuesday night, where we approved our budget, and that budget, just so everybody knows, is 42,668,789 for next school year. That does assume a 3% increase in inflation costs, as well as a 3% increase in fee structure for services. One of the things that we did note that we lost, because of the challenges in legislation, we lost $195,000 grant for mental health for students, so that hurts the budget a little bit. Had a scale meeting, executive committee meeting on last Friday, and we've already started the process for the legislative platform for 2026 for all county government entities, and the last thing I have on my list is Wednesday, I am going to the safety conference in St. Louis for COSPA.
Just Kaylin?
He's not. Carolyn?
No reports for me next meeting, so I'll get to committee.
Finance facilities as well, I don't think there's been any other committees, AMST is partially on that this morning during the work hour. Kim? Yeah, you know, June is a strangely busy time. We actually had the first event of our leadership retreat last week, where we had our entire cabinet, principals, assistant principals, deans, did some really good work on, around collective advocacy and getting folks to have a higher level of understanding of what that is and how to lead with that, and I know we'll have some people come to the board and, and talk a little bit about what we've done at our leadership retreat. Tomorrow's actually day three, there'll be an elementary section, a secondary section. Elementary will be very focused on lead time and literacy adoption, secondary will be very focused on assessment for learning and some of those components. So our, our leaders are extremely busy, it comes on the Fourth of July break, and we hope that they get away a little bit in July with their vacation time, because you will be having our August fourth back to the school meeting with our leaders before we, before we know it, and frankly, we're already working on that too.
Amber, Kevin?
Nothing for me?
Nothing for me today.
Dr. Redmond?
I've spoken plenty.
All right, thank you. Next up is upcoming meetings and important dates. I just want to note that our next school board meeting, either committees or the business meeting, is not till July twenty eighth. So everybody gets to enjoy some time between now and then. Any other meetings or important dates anyone wants to bring attention to?
Didn't want to discuss the, maybe the training in August that we had talked about two months ago. Phase three and phase four training. I got some information from Katie today on that and she does have placeholders on her calendar for phase three for us if we decide to proceed with that. And that would be.
Got your email there?
What did it say?
Ninth and sixteenth.
Ninth and sixteenth, twenty third would work as well. So those were kind of the weekends that we had discussed.
And one of those, you're out, right, Joe?
Actually out the twenty third also.
The sixteen, right. So sixteenth and twenty third, you're, you're at, so nine. So I guess we have a little time, when do we get your confirm, buddy?
Um, she has it on her calendar, so I'm wondering how soon it's possible.
So, yeah, I mean, I'm not going to put everybody on the spot this minute, but we can follow up with, with everybody and see if the ninth works. Because that would be great to have all seven of us, if we can't all be present, the value is greatly diminished, so. So again, don't need an answer right this second, but we will follow up with you soon. Thank you for making that. Anything else? That would entertain a motion adjournment?
Go.
With motion by Aldridge and a second by Peterson, any discussion? Seeing none, all was in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Any adjournment?